Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British States, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reading just as well.
I don't think anyone has signed up for citizens form, so we'll move into the agenda. The first thing on the agenda is the 2627 school calendar.
So you have a copy of the calendar. This is the proposed calendar for next year. We're bringing it to you a little bit early. We usually bring this fourth in December, but we are going to be asking for an exemption to DPI to start before the September 1st start date. And within our letter that we'll be sending to them, it's we're going to fall underneath the category of purpose of facility upgrades, potential construction projects, as well as the summer support learning program. And really this one day, by starting then on August 31st, really will buy us three days at the end of the school year. So that's a big help when you're, you know, when you're trying to locate days instead of being until the ninth of June, you really don't want to be in that eight, nine area. So we're going to petition, we are recommending that we would petition for this date. Calendar committee came together, you know, in the last couple of years, we've used them more as advisory, just simply because we've been in construction. We don't necessarily know if we'll be in construction, but we do know that we have quite a few facility upgrades and work that we will be doing that would require some of the spaces, even if we're not in the referendum, we would need some of the spaces to be available earlier rather than later. And then this would fall in line with our summer school programming. And the committee heavily suggested that I would bring this forward as a recommendation. So it is, it is, when you look at the calendar, it does fit in nicely.
Historically, do you know how long it takes them to make a decision on this? Just in terms of giving.
Like if we turn this in, we usually, we usually have noticed right away when it falls in this category, which will be nice because then when we can publish this calendar, it will be to families a little bit earlier than normal. And usually that they're on our heels asking in December what the next year calendar is. So this will also get it all to our families sooner rather than later.
So is this like a continued approval tonight, based on DPI approving it, or?
If we are, we would be making a motion to submit the resolution to DPI.
Correct. And then if we have that, I'll bring this back to you at the 19th for you to do formal, but I thought you would want to see the calendar in front of you to see where things are.
I'll move to waive the reading of the resolution.
One second.
There's a motion and a second to waive the reading of the resolution. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Is, so the motion is actually different, right? It's not to approve the school year, it's to submit the resolution to DPI.
Correct. Because you really can't approve this calendar until we know whether or not they will accept that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the submitting of the resolution to adjust the school calendar for 2026, 2027 as presented.
There's a motion and a second to submit the resolution to the DPI as presented. Any other question or comments? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And so we should be able to bring this up for a motion to approve the calendar at the next meeting. Correct. Okay. Next up on the agenda is the PCSD data update.
All right. As you can see, we have a crew with us tonight that's going to help present the information. We break this down into two segments. So tonight you're going to hear about math, science, and FRCs, as well as some demographic data. And then next meeting, you're going to hear literacy, social studies, and SEO will be the three that we focus on. We're going to not spend a lot of time on each of the slides. We're hoping that you've taken some time to review them. So the presenters will hit some high points and we'll really focus more on the strengths, the challenges, and the implications. So, so we'll get rolling. This is kind of the format that we've been using for several years. So it's a continuous improvement framework. And really, tonight, the two questions that we're going to get at with you happen to be where are we now and how did we get, how did we get where we are? And so those are kind of those two circled areas. Tonight, we'll focus on our demographics and our student learning outcomes or our data related to that. Know that there's other times though, like when you look at the school perceptions and, you know, like culture surveys and those types of things, those things are happening. Like you see the school perception surveys, know that when we are in our sale meetings or meeting with our guide coalitions or teams, there's other ways of collecting that perception data as well. And then we're always looking at school processes and programming in terms of instruction and our systems and how things are organized. So, so there is data on that. It's just tonight, we're not focusing on that. And it still is a part of what else we do. You can see there's other questions which we will get to in December when we come back and we actually talk about our 100-day plans at the district and the building level.
Okay. So when we talk about assessment systems, really you see that term on the upper right, a balanced system that mirrors what the state tells us is our balanced format, balanced assessment system. And then tier one, tier two, and tier three, that can be defined really as formative, interim, and summative, with the tier one being those classroom assessments, the tier two being those ongoing assessments, like the screeners or benchmark, progress monitoring. And then finally, that tier three or summative being ultimately those state assessments that our students take. And on the right side of that screen, you kind of see the inverse there, where the first three really formative assessments, common formative assessments, and common end of unit assessments are those tier one classroom assessments, the benchmarks being more the tier two, and then finally, the external assessments being those state assessments or summative tier three. And then on the next slide, you see the district assessment calendar for the 25, 26 school years linked. And there are different tabs there, including the list of the district assessments, as well as our local assessments that we give. So just say there's a lot going on with that. There have been a lot of people working hard to make those assessments happen. We had a team yesterday at a training on DPI learning about the updates to the forward exam. And so a lot of work to be done there and multiple assessments. So if you do have any questions about any of that info, please let me know and we can get an answer to your question. Okay?
So this is the format that, like I said, we'll probably hit a little bit heavier and harder as we're going through the presentation, but it just kind of is a way to formulate our strengths, our challenges, and what implications kind of it brings to the work that we're doing here in the district. So we'll hit demographic data. This is just kind of an overview of our state report card, the one the previous year. So we do know that right now, the state report card is embargoed. We're expecting release of that November 11th where it goes public. And then, you know, obviously, there's the comparison with the other districts and kind of digging a little bit further into ours. So I'm not going to go through each of these items because you're going to see kind of the attendance and the student groups and, you know, kind of our disability and our economically disadvantaged broken out as we get in deeper into some of the slides. So this is just kind of an overview of that. Here is a five-year trend of our data. And so you can see, this is probably our largest, our most in terms of attendance. So we're over 3,800. So, you know, it doesn't look much of a difference, but every student counts and brings in funding for the district. And so obviously, we like to be at this point. And you also know from the last meeting that this is probably one of the first years where our coming into, our going out of the district is less than what's coming in. And so we're happy to see that effort happening as well. This just gives you an idea of when Dana does the third Friday counts with our administrative assistants at the building level, this is what elementary trends look like for the last five years. So again, we're seeing, you know, a fluctuation in some buildings, but we're also seeing a steady increase in others and kind of a maintaining of those numbers as well. Here would be our middle school and high school numbers, as well as at the very bottom, the little itty bitty numbers. I guess when you have a thousand on your chart and then you already have our Ekeel, it at least shows you though, you know, where we're at and that we are providing that opportunity for kids as well. But middle school attendance is on a climb and high school obviously is back up again. They lost a really large class last year. And so we're happy to see, you know, kind of that they're in that range as well. Then we, this is a snapshot from that report card, but it gives you an idea of where we're at with our ethnicity. We're almost 90% of students being white. And then you can kind of see the subgroup categories of where that ranges. So the other 10% really make up for two or more races, as well as American Indian and our Hispanic, Latino. And then we have kind of a small amount in the other areas. Oops, that's not good. There it is. Our socioeconomic, or how it's really identified on our reports that we get, is with economically disadvantaged. So our overall percentage in the district is 21%. That is a little bit down compared to when we usually fill out our title applications. We've been probably in that 23, 24% range. Problem is sometimes families don't fill out the paperwork and they easily could qualify. And so, you know, our offices do the best that they can, ensuring that families who do need that, have that opportunity to complete it and get that. But you can then also see how it is for each of the buildings. So within our elementary to our high school, it ranges, you know, kind of in that 18, 19% up into the 22% area.
Is this based off of the, excuse me, free and reduced lunches? Is that how they get those?
Yeah, exactly. That national lunch code.
Thank you.
As far as students with disabilities, our percentage is pretty stable, usually between that 14 and 15% range for students identified with disabilities for the district. Then you can see each building has different percentages. Just calling out Glenbrook has our program for students with intellectual disabilities. So that's going to look a little different with their percentage, as well as our Lenoir Early Childhood Special Education Program is housed there. So that does give a little variability there. But keeping in mind that like this is all individualized and these percentages can change from one year to another based on how the student transition from one school to another as well. And then this is the middle school and high school. So we monitor this pretty closely and look at, you know, making sure that we're meeting these for all of our students. Essentially, when students are able to be dismissed from special education programs, that is always our ultimate goal, but we continue to serve until they no longer need us to serve.
So like I said, where we probably hit more of our, on this part is our strengths. And we mentioned some of these as we went through. It is our highest enrollment in the past five years. And obviously, growth is what we're looking for as well. And so when that happens at both elementary and the secondary level, that really helps us with the work that we're doing as well. I mentioned that we're happy with having a virtual option for families. It provides them with an opportunity if a non-traditional learning environment is what they're looking for. And then obviously, all of our work with professional learning communities and really that emphasis on all means all and helping students achieve at high levels, it's a strength. But we also know that we have some work to do as well. And that kind of shifts us into the challenge area that our subgroups, whether it's economically disadvantaged or students with disability, we have some work to do in closing those achievement gaps. And so, you know, we continue to emphasize that we continue to look at that data and we continue to work on plans on how we can improve that. You know, obviously, as enrollment changes, that also creates some space challenges, which we were able to solve with two of our buildings. But, you know, there is at least one other building for sure that we have a need. And then it's just looking at, you know, as we had our CTE focus group area, it's really looking at how we can make sure that we have the facilities to meet kids' needs and our manufacturers and building and our partners, all of those individuals that where our students will end up, working or going to college and being college and career ready. And then when you look at the implications, we talked about some of this already, specifically with the subgroups and closing the achievement gaps. And you'll hear that tonight in the two areas that we do have work to do in both math and science. And then I wanted to note here as well that the system that we use and we take a lot of our screenshots from is EduClimber. We are going to make a change at the end of this year to NextPath. So basically, the people who developed EduClimber sold it and they went off and built a different one with all of the things that they wanted to have in EduClimber that they didn't do. And so lots of school districts are switching to NextPath. We did a preview with them this summer. We wanted to make the switch, but we couldn't get out of, get out of our contract out of EduClimber. So we're doing this year and then we'll make the switch, just like some other districts are. So that is kind of that area. And now we'll move into math.
Is that data, is that data going to be transferable into the next platform?
Yes.
Okay.
So next, we'll take a closer look at our math data across a few various assessments. And the first one that we'll take a look at is our Wisconsin Forward Exam, which is our state mandated assessment aligned to our Wisconsin academic standards. And you will see that demonstrates students demonstrating proficiency in math and ELA. And then also, you'll see science and then in our presentation down the line, social studies as well. With this data, there's been different updates to cut score. So sometimes it's hard to look at year to year to get that kind of apples to apples comparison. But even so, it's really important to look closely at our 24, 25 data. It gives us really a picture of where our students are at, our growth areas and areas to celebrate. We're also able to use this data to drill down really to specific performance around specific standards. So that's something that we're doing at the building level when we really drill down deeper into the data.
And then this slide basically is just an overview of how our students did in math on the Ford Exam, third grade through eighth grade. It kind of is the percentages at the top kind of focus on what percentage of our students were advanced and meeting those categories within the Ford Exam for math. And then also the graphs you'll notice are different sizes. And that's just based on the number of students that are in each of those grade levels. And then if we go to the next slide, it's just broken down again per grade level. So in third grade, we had 68% of our students meeting or advanced. This is the first time that those students are seeing that assessment. Fourth grade, we were at 61% of our students. And in fifth grade, we were at 65% of our students. And that's across all elementary schools.
Then we transition to the middle school. And you can see that sixth grade, we were at 64%. Seventh grade was at 62%. And then eighth grade was our highest at 69% meeting or being advanced on that assessment. In the next slide, yearly, we bring the FRCC comparison, very typical to our previous, where we're kind of in that middle, the upper middle portion. A year ago, we flipped spots with West appear and went from fourth place to third place. This year, it flipped back the other way. But it's, we're traditionally in that third or fourth spot, you know, over the course of time.
Next, we'll shift to our AmesWeb Plus data, which is our K8 assessment system for reading and math, really used to screen all of our students three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring. And statewide, it's been adopted through Act 20 for 4K through third grade. We've expanded the use up through eighth grade. And with that, you'll see, looking at the scoring, we're looking at students scoring at or above the 26 percentile considered at the above average range, our average to above average. So when we're kind of looking at that data, just keep in mind, this is the first full year data where we have AmesWeb for the, for the full school year.
And then this looks a little different because for the Ford Exam, it's just focused on third through eighth grade, where AmesWeb data starts already at kindergarten and goes all the way up to fifth grade. So what you'll see is you'll see across the board where our students fell in fall and then winter to spring. So you'll see that growth. So in kindergarten, we started with 80% of our students at or above grade level. And in the spring, they moved up to 87%. For our first graders, we went from 71% to 90% of our students. Second grade, we went from 80 to 89%. Third grade was 84 to 89. Fourth grade, 87 to 91. And then our fifth grader is 88 to 92. So overall, pleased with the growth that our students showed from fall to winter to spring on AmesWeb.
Then similarly, at the sixth grade level, again, you're trying to see more green and less red. We went from 82 to 89% in sixth grade. In seventh grade, we transitioned 88 to 91%. And then in eighth grade, 88 to 91% as well.
And then once we get to high school, we have to, we have a different assessment because AmesWeb isn't normed all the way up to high school, kind of stops at eighth grade. So for ninth and 10th grade to, for our screener that we give three times a year, we use our HMH growth measure. We give that in math and readings, but we'll look at the math results here. So in ninth grade, these are results across the year from winter to spring. And you can see, we went, we started at 52% at or above the benchmark level for HMH growth measure in math and increased that to 75%. And then, as I said, we also give that to our 10th graders. So starting in fall, we measured at 48% meeting that HMH benchmark level or exceeding it, and then increased to 62% by the spring.
Good question. So since there's a three times throughout school year assessment, is it the same assessment each time? Or is it slightly different each time?
So HMH is an adaptive assessment. So once the students take it, it remembers them and kind of starts them at their level. And then, you know, increases or adjusts the questioning based on how they respond. So it's kind of a different test for every student. And then they use that data to determine whether or not they're meeting whatever that cut score is for their grade level. And then, of course, we take the pre-ACT secure at ninth and 10th grade. That's the required state assessment for those, that grade level. And then ACT at the 11th grade level. Challenge with ACT is it's the statewide test. It's what we have to use for benchmarking. But it is a college prep test and that all of our students are looking to go to college. So sometimes that could be a challenge when we talk about what we're taking. But it is our assessment, so we take a look at those results. So this first slide that you're going to see for ninth grade is the DPI performance level. So DPI has their own cut scores for how they determine if a student is meeting advanced, approaching, which looks different than the benchmarks from ACT. So this is DPI's performance levels. And based on that, our ninth graders were at a 74.1% at advanced or meeting. Now, what you're seeing on this next slide is still our results for our ninth graders for pre-ACT last year, but this is the college readiness level. So this is DPI, or excuse me, ACT saying if a student was to go in and take a math level course at college, they'd have a 50% chance of having a B or better when they exited that class. So we have students who are, 46% of our students were meeting the expectations for ninth graders when they took that pre-ACT. 10th graders, here's our DPI, DPI cut score performance levels. 56% were in meeting or advanced. And then these are those pre-ACT readiness levels, again, for our 10th graders. And we were at 46% at where they should be as 10th graders, based on those readiness levels.
So on the DPI pre-ACT performance levels for 10th grade, there's 4.6%, but did not take the test. What would keep them from taking the test?
Students who have attendance issues and aren't coming to school, we can't get them in within the window to get them actually tested. Sometimes if they have an issue where during the test, they are supposed to have their cell phone, get their cell phone out, and then their test gets kind of expunged from DPI and from ACT, so it can't be counted. Those kinds of things might account for that.
All right. I was just curious.
Yep. All right. So then the next results you see are our 10th grade, or excuse me, our 11th grade ACT math results. And those are just kind of meeting or not meeting. So you can see that we have 46.3% that are at that meeting level for 11th grade in math. And then similar to Ford Exam, we have those FRCC comparisons. So if you look at 23, 24, we were in a really good spot. We were in second, we were in second at that 21.5. And this is the math composite score is what we compare, rather than the percent that are meeting at certain performance levels. Whereas at 24, 25, we did see a dip. So we are at that fourth place in FRCC for our math scores.
Do we see this ever going away, since a lot of colleges don't even require an ACT for admission anymore?
It's not, I mean, it's not really up to us. It's up to DPI. And they reach out to different vendors and determine what they think is going to be best. They also work with the legislature, like which we should use as our assessment. They also work with the legislator, like which we should use as our assessment. And so there was a time when we had like WKCE, it was called at the high school level. I think we did smarter balance one year as a pilot. And then ultimately DPI decided to go with ACT. So, you know, it would be nice if we had something that was maybe more aligned to our standards. As opposed to ACT since it's a college prep test. But right now, I know they re-upped that contract a couple of years ago while I was the district assessment coordinator. So for the foreseeable future, this will probably be our test.
Yeah, it's supposed to be more valuable in the future, but.
And it doesn't match up necessarily to the standards that we teach.
Right.
At these levels.
In fact, Jody was just at a meeting with CISA 6 and sent us some information about like, what is the correspondence between like our standards and ACT? And there was a weak link between the two tests in English and in math, which is unfortunate, so.
Because I mean, we're, our programs like youth apprenticeship, things that do not require a college degree. I mean, that is what vastly, I would say the majority of our students are interested in, right? And we can see it in the programs that we offer. So it almost seems silly that this is what the standard is because it's not what the majority of our children are gonna be moving to in the future.
It's challenging and we definitely try to work our hardest to motivate our students to try and have them see some relevancy in how they can use the assessment in different ways. Like yes, you can use it to get into a WTC. Yes, you can use it for these other things. And also just give them preparation and glances and practice with it. Because if you feel more confident, then maybe you'll be more likely to do well. I mean, it's how we're measured, so we want to do well, but yeah, it is challenging.
You guys actually get the raw data though? So you're able to look at how many students, so if a thousand students, that's probably too many. Just say 100 students took the test. How many of the 100 actually go on to college? And then if it's 50-50, the 50 that didn't, you could just see that they just click, 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 click and submitted it. I mean, to help you validate the results and identify if there's a need for anything.
The other problem that we have also is that they can opt out. So we have students who take it and they love the score that they got because they got a 30, 31, taking it off site. And then they're like, well, I'm not gonna waste my time taking this. So that we don't get that score to count in to this one. And we have a couple that do that, so that hurts us.
Yeah.
It's, it's a moneymaker.
Yeah, this just seems flawed, but I know we don't control it, but all right. Thank you.
Yeah, some of the other tricky things with it too, I mean, with it being a timed test, we're there for three and a half hours and stamina can be an issue for it as well. And I mean, ACT is set up to have a bell curve. So it is set up, they are trying to change questions so that not all students are continually successful with it. So if there's not that buy-in and then there's that test that's trying to get, you know, the differentiation between students, it can make it difficult.
So three hours, can you just remind me like how, how that three hours works? Is there a set breaks in place? Do they get to get up, take a walk, get a drink of water, bathroom breaks, things like that?
Yeah, there's, so there's two breaks. There's a 15-minute break and then there is another five-minute break built into it as well. Can they get up and go to the bathroom? They can, but they can't stop the test if they do. So it has to be quiet and the timer is still running on the test.
Thank you.
At the same time, we haven't thrown in the towel. So like today, we did a 10 webinar through CISA 6 and they are offering. And really, I like their approach. It's not about test-taking strategies because the research says that, you know, you can max out the amount of time that you've spent on test prep and it has no net return on it. And so this one was more about instructional strategies and what you're teaching and, and just how you're engaging kids. And so we are meeting Monday and we'll talk about getting a team down there from the high school and engaging in that. And the materials that they're providing with it, that we get a free copy of, look pretty decent on, on different instructional strategies that high school teachers can be using. And so we're gonna go and check that out and then go back and see how it works for us, so.
And you would look to implement those in the classes, meeting the standards that we have in place right now? Would it be integrated in or would it be something separate for students?
Integrated.
Okay.
Yep. Awesome.
And then on this slide, basically, we're just kind of summarizing where we're at with math related to our strengths, our challenges and implications. So for the strengths, what it's showing is that we have a strong core one or universal curriculum with 80 to 93% of our students in K8 at or above grade level with that AmesWeb, the district assessment. It's showing that for the Ford Exam, which is a state assessment, our proficiency ranges from that 61 to 69% of our students from third grade through eighth grade. And then also, we've really been focusing on the professional development side of things related to math, using ABMR, using building thinking classrooms and really focusing on that problem solving and that problem-based learning.
Challenges, certainly, we, we, we see ourselves, we are at fourth in the FRCC for math, both with forward and with ACT. And obviously, we would like to see ourselves ranked higher, so we want to see improvements there. We did notice that there are some variation that across grade levels with the performance and achievement. So trying to understand why we're not seeing that, why we're seeing that uneven performance and address it. Fourth and sixth grade were examples of that. And then when we have those transitional years, ninth and 10th grade especially, when the results, you know, aren't showing what we want, we want to make sure we have a really good alignment with our instructional, with our instructional practices so that we can see good, good achievement at both middle and high school levels.
And then regarding the implications and as we take all of that information in, and I'll start with the bottom bullet, there is, based off of what Lindsay, or excuse me, what Chris had mentioned as far as the Ford Exam versus the AmesWeb is we wanna, you know, we wanna have solid tier one universal instruction so that in, in all of those assessments, we're at the 80-plus percent that are meeting or exceeding the standards and what's expected. We wanna continue to target, have targeted interventions and supports for kids that, that really focus on, you know, skills and growth, you know, mindset and, and those legging skills to, to help kids that aren't at that 80th, you know, plus percent. And then how can we help do that? It's through very targeted professional development with our teachers, you know, ABMR, building thinking classrooms. And then with that universal piece, language that, that we've really been focusing a lot of our efforts on is that teacher clarity, having kids be engaged, knowing exactly what does success look like, and then providing feedback and checking for understanding in our universal instruction.
This then brings us into science. And the one thing at the elementary level is only our fourth graders take the Ford Exam in the area of science each year. So that in this past fourth grade, 58% of our students were advanced or met those expectations.
And then the next time that I, the kids in our district take the assessment is in eighth grade. So fourth grade and eighth grade are the two areas and we were at 53% meeting or being advanced. And then when we look at, similar to what we did with math, looking at the FRCC, you can see the different comparisons where as a district between fourth and eighth grade, we, we declined. And we're at a 55.1% and that put us in, in that spot that you can see up on the charts.
What are the discussions that are happening with, around science in the middle school?
I would say if we can hold on that for the slide that's on implications.
Fair enough.
But you'll see some of the strengths and lesser strengths and, and we'll talk a little bit more about that.
And then at the high school level, we do not have HMH testing for science. So it is just the pre-ACT Secure and the ACT. Similar to what Lindsay had said, the 13% of our students for science are already at the point of being able to be predicted to get a B or higher at a college level. 23%, so 36 total percent are at, surpassing the pre-ACT benchmark for the ninth graders. Then looking at the 10th graders, it'd be 14% are at that level of that B or higher at a college level or predicted to be at a B or higher at a college level science course. And then 18% added on to that for 32% meeting that pre-ACT benchmark. And then at the 11th grade for the, for the ACT, we have that 44.1% that are meeting. And then in looking at us, our comparison data to the FRCC schools and some other neighboring schools, we were in fourth last year, we're similarly, we're in fourth this year. Looking at some of the percentages, we did have a drop. Similarly, other schools had a 0.8% drop. Don't know why there's a correlation. One school did go up, or actually, two schools did go up. But we were still sitting in fourth and still surpassing the statewide benchmark for it.
So then this brings us to the summary of those strengths, challenges and implications. This year, all of our elementary staff have now been trained and we've made that full transition to MYSY Kids at the elementary level. In the middle school and high school, all the teachers once again have been, gone through professional development around iQuest in the middle school and then science dimension, dimensions, ninth to 12th grade. So that is, that full transition is now taking place.
For the challenges then, for the Ford Exam, we moved from third to fifth in the FRCC for grades four and eight. We want to improve science achievement at grades nine and 10 on pre-ACT Secure with more students performing at or above that pre-ACT benchmark. And then science standards, seek to balance application of science with the content of science, which can make it difficult for teachers to maintain focus on the power of standards.
And then to respond to your question, Heidi, I think that, you know, it really comes down to solid universal instruction. I think it's making sure that we understand and we're assessing the right standards. So really getting into the data that we get from the forward, looking at what are the power standards that we're, we're assessing on and how does that compare to last year's Ford Exam? And making sure that, you know, we're giving kids like the experiences in those areas. And it's really hitting those three different dimensions that's mentioned here that the science standards do, you know, connect with. So I think it's having kids do science. I think it's making sure that we're utilizing science and engineering practices and, and the other things. So it's really shoring up our, our universal instruction.
I think there's a couple other things in that, sometimes I think the pendulum switches too far. And yes, we do believe that science is about doing and it's the hands-on, it's a verb for us. But I think sometimes you can switch too far to that point that you miss out on some of those content standards in the disciplinary and the why behind the phenomena of, of why things happen. And so I think we have to draw in a little bit more on that and come back to while we're teaching and we're doing the hands-on, they have to understand why that's happening. And so we maybe need to come back a little bit more. I would also say that science and social studies are two areas that, let's be honest, our focus isn't always on them, especially at the elementary level because literacy and math are the two focuses. And so literacy with the science of reading really has, you know, ramped up in terms of what we have to spend for time. And I don't know if you're familiar, but there's legislation right now that has made it through its way in assembly of, they're not calling it science of reading or science of math yet. But we know that it's, there's going to be a numeracy assessment that kids have to take, which I assume will come through AmesWeb. We know that there'll have to be a personalized math plan if kids aren't achieving a certain percentage. And it's not going to be funded. I just read that today in our SAA update. And then there's a third thing based on the Ford Exam and how kids would do in math that would require interventions. And so obviously, when those things happen, the other things aren't as important, even though what do kids really want to learn and be engaged in? Science and social studies because that's where it's at. It, they're fun subjects, they're great ways to learn. And so we struggle with that of, you don't have enough time to teach those content areas. And I think that is showing in our scores as well.
So last semester, well, last year, in the, in the spring semester, we talked a little bit about earth science. And I, I don't think that's a requirement anymore, right, at a high school level? And the credit recovery slash Odyssey program. So in our science area within the high school, are we seeing that being leveraged more? Which would help us understand these numbers or? If you need to get information, that's fine. I'm just curious, how many students are in that program that may be struggling in science? Where it would help connect the dots with some of these scores that we're seeing?
So is the question like how many students we currently have using Odysseyware to earn their science credit? Is that the question?
Oh, yes and no. So yes, and does that correlate with some of our science results maybe? Maybe the students are struggling. So we're seeing, we're seeing the, I won't say the problem, the issue show up over here, right? Which would help, okay, well, this, this makes sense. It doesn't solve the problem, but at least there's the correlation there as to how students are getting through it.
I can certainly look into that.
Okay.
I think your question was credit recovery, right? It was kind of what you were asking.
I mean, kind of on the same terms though, like do we see 60s% of the kids failing biology? I mean, no. So, yeah, it's just hitting the time to get it, you know, tied together. When was the last time the curriculum like in the high school for science was updated? I know we're rolling out new science kits in elementary.
They went through their adoption five years ago.
Okay.
So, and then same thing, it was middle school and high school about the same time because we just started the renewal of those resources.
Well, for the high school, have you looked at the ACT versus AP scores? And students that are earning college credit? I mean, we just had that presentation about our AP scores and the number of students that are settling, that are getting college credit in the AP classes that they're taking. And is there a discrepancy in terms of this ACT test? And science is concerning in terms of these numbers. There's a lot of AP classes that we offer in various science classes. Have, have we looked at that data to compare that?
No, I haven't looked at like, for example, the students who were enrolled and passed the AP test versus what they got on the ACT for like 11th graders or students who have taken an AP class maybe as an earlier age. I certainly could look at that. I would predict that they would do well on the ACT just because they're, you know, usually are higher achieving, higher achieving students and they're, you know, versed in study skills and test taking and preparation and all those things. But I could certainly take a look and let you know what kind of results we have.
I think we've had this conversation too. We find that the science ACT test is a lot about reading. It's not a lot about science and applying science. It's about can you read whatever they're giving you, right? That's kind of what we're getting.
That's what cold and shaken his head, yes.
You typically, you know, you'll get six to seven passages. You have 35 minutes, answer 40 questions that are connected to it. It's interpretation of data, so you have data charts that you'll be reading, scientific investigation. And then you might get two different scientific studies that you're trying to make inferences between and draw comparisons between. So, I mean, we have a former student here and he can say.
It's not science.
It is a reading test with scientific implications.
But you're a good reader, aren't you?
So if you're not interested in science really at 11th grade and you know that that's not a field you're going in, I mean, we can see that they're probably not putting that effort in. I mean, that's pretty intense. You're saying that time limit and that number of questions with a big reading portion.
It's also the second to last test and like, so could be the stamina of the day. Do you know the students who are trying on the test, like they're still giving their effort, are still, are still scoring successfully? That's a great question. A student who maybe isn't, has engaged in the test at that point, maybe is disengaged even more. I don't know.
And we require science and writing portion in the ACT at the high school, right?
It's required statewide.
Statewide, yeah.
Great questions.
Next up is the 4Cs, consuming content, collaborating, creating and critically thinking. We no longer have like a specific 4Cs goals. Years ago, we did, we had like a survey and everything that, you know, that we took, especially at the elementary level. Really now, it's all kind of embedded with our LMS and our DLS. They're working to integrate that within our ELA curriculum, which works out pretty nice. Yeah, like I can throw in a few more abbreviations. But it works out nice, especially I, I will speak to the elementary side, like with the survey that we used to have. We used to almost spend time like developing like vocabulary where you would ask a student if they, you know, did they do like a digital poster? And they're like, no. And they're like, but I just saw you working with this program, that's a digital. Oh, okay, then I did. You know, I mean, it was really, we were kind of almost teaching them vocabulary. So, so now we're integrating it right into the ELA curriculum, which is nice. Our district goal, again, for this year is 100% of students will demonstrate growth within ELA. And then again, K through eight this year, our DLS and LMS is, they're gonna collaborate to make sure that 100% of the students are provided with opportunities to be able to, to integrate that into their ELA curriculum. Slide 58 kind of shows like what this would look like. So we have an example through HMH of just third grade. So you see the essential questions and the genres and the tasks and then how the 4Cs can be incorporated into that to provide a learning opportunity using technology. And then slide 59 just kind of shows where we were at with the goal of 100% of students would engage in at least two technologies. in at least two technology-based activities, K through eight. You can see middle school did a really nice job. They got a hundred percent across the board. Elementary, we fell a little bit, third, fourth, fifth, but, but something and an area for us to continue to grow on with us embedding it now within ELA. We should, we should see some growth there too when we come this time next year. The next four slides, take those four Cs and, and break it down into what they are and then some examples for you to, to look at. So that first one being, you know, consuming content. You can see there's some neat examples in our elementary and, and middle school. You know, one of them up there is with virtual reality expeditions. And, you know, I think it's really striking the balance between digital, print and, and human resources, such as guest speakers, talking with the kids on these different curricular areas. But again, we just, we wanted to highlight some experiences of, of the learning that happens through this at, at some different levels. So those are the examples for consuming content. The, the next one is in relationship to collaborate, collaborating digitally with others. You know, you see some different examples. The sixth grade example is them collaborating digitally to script, record and edit podcasts. If you had been on the board for a little bit, that was one of the things in the previous surveys. And like Curtis had said, you know, they use some vocabulary. Have you ever done this? I'm like, no, but you really have. And, and, and those are, there's some neat ones there to be able to take a look at under the collaboration portion of the four Cs. The next slide is about creation, and I think, you know, showing what they know through creating, using those real-world tools. And we really strive to provide opportunities to create videos, those podcasts, infographics, eBooks and more. And, and this slide really kind of shows some different examples of that, that if you have some time to, to take a look at. And then the, the fourth one is about being a critical thinker. And again, I think the, you know, lots of neat examples there, but looking at the third grade one and the breakout EDU to analyze clues connected to some different curricular topics to help deepen, you know, the, the kid's understanding into the learning. But it's just some different examples there of, of the four season action.
And then at the high school level, students nine through twelve completed a survey during homeroom, just to talk about their interaction with it. Twenty-five percent of our students took the survey. Really, the goal is to get a variety of different tools for students. And we had ninety percent of our students that reported using a variety of resources, whether that's reading through technology, listening through technology, or watching through technology. And about fifty percent of the high school students were regularly collaborating with digital tools, with classmates or experts. Fifty percent have reported that, and we're finding how we measure collaboration would be an area that we would continue to work on. And then students are creating a variety of media to demonstrate their learning with additional focus. Like, we could be focusing more on like infographs, podcasts, stuff like that. But as you can see, that's just kind of demonstrating the variety of different tools that students are saying that they're engaging with. And then students are demonstrating, also saying that they're demonstrating responsible, respectful and safe online behavior through monthly digital citizenship, sorry, monthly digital citizenship lessons.
So overall, if we look at our strengths for four Cs, first is just four Cs are integrated within all of our content areas. So on that first slide, when we talked about all the acronyms, LMS and DLS is library media specialist and digital learning specialist. That team was in front of you, I, I believe, really this year, and talked, shared the library plan with you. But part of their job is integrating technology within the curriculum, and then the other part is managing a library. And so we are fortunate to have staff that can integrate with, with teachers. In terms of the information that was shared with you, this year, we really focused on our ELA curriculum, but they also work on integrating technology in math and science and social studies. Second thing there is that our teachers are still highly engaged, engaged in learning about technology. You've heard about our Apple Core program. We have eighty-eight percent of staff that, that attend sessions after school to continue to learn about integrating technology. And we also do an excellent job of embedding technology in all of our professional development that happens. Our, our learning leaders do an excellent job of supporting teachers by modeling technology. And then finally, that digital learning specialist team working and, and supporting teachers through the integration of that. Some of the challenges is just, as you guys probably know yourselves, is just technology is ever-changing. And we find some really useful tools, and then maybe the following year, they start to charge us for them. Or maybe that tool is gone and there's another tool. And so that's just kind of the world we live in. It's difficult to implement our digital literacy survey because we do it in the spring. And there's, as you, if you look at that district assessment calendar, between district assessments and classroom assessments, there's a lot that happens. And so it's, it's hard to implement this in a meaningful way. You saw that at the high school, we do it during homeroom, and we had a twenty-five percent completion rate. And it was given, available to all students. So that's a challenge for us that we're continuing to work on. And then finally, I would just say, it's really hard to assess the meaningfulness of technology on learning because there's so many factors that go into assessing learning. Was it the technology? Was it the teacher presentation? Was it the collaboration? So we continue to, to refine our questions and our assessments to really gauge the impact of technology. And then finally, the implications is, as I mentioned to you, our team is really working through ELA this year and HMH. So that example that Curtis showed you about third grade and how technology was embedded in that third grade unit, we actually have that for every unit of HMH in grades K through eight. So every unit has ways to integrate technology. And we will continue to, as, as Curtis shared, at K eight this year, the data that we collected was around those building goals. And you saw the data from the digital literacy survey from the high school. We are going to continue to use the digital literacy survey, K twelve, but maybe alternate years instead of doing it every year. So next, we'll go into celebrations, and we do have a lot to celebrate within our district. We're continuing to see that strong enrollment growth with really our highest numbers yet, best open enrollment balance we've had with more students coming in than leaving. So that's really a big celebration. Our focus continues to be on that high-quality tier one instruction and really remains central to our district-wide PLC journey. We're also growing in our area of using data and evidence and strengthening those data protocols using our tools like Edge and Climber to better meet, meet student needs and adjusting really our tier one and tier two instruction based on that data. Next, really, in math, our professional learning continues to be a priority, committed to that professional learning around building thinking classrooms and our AVMR training and supports. Our K through eight math performance is strong. We kind of had, went through those numbers with eighty to ninety-three percent of those students scoring at or above the average range on our Ames Web Plus screener. And then finally, really outstanding engagement in professional learning overall, like Amy touched on. Eighty-eight percent of our staff participated in that Apple Core training with over a hundred hours of our district-led sessions. So lots to really celebrate across our district.
So like we started off with this part, next time, we will be back to still talk about where are we now and how did we get there? That'll be a focus on that literacy, ELA and social studies and SEL. But then in December, team will also be back here that will talk about where do we want to be? And how are we going to get where we want to be? And that's really a focus on those hundred-day plans that will, at that point, be in the midst of our second hundred-day plan. So you'll kind of get to see that from the perspective of both district and building level. And then obviously, all the way along, we're always monitoring and looking at, you know, are we making a difference in what we're doing? I think Ally had shared with you at your retreat this summer that there's a big focus of teacher clarity. And that includes like learning targets, engagement of students, success criteria and checking for understanding. So you can see somewhat, and some of the boards might be turned, but we spent, as a learning leader team, a couple rotations and then took pictures of this and have it in our documents. But that's something that our teams are constantly doing. And it's not just our learning leaders. It's also our teachers, when they're in their collaborative teams, are digging into their daily assessments or their, you know, common formative assessments, and then looking at how they're going to use that to drive instruction. So it is a part of, of what we do day in and day out to make sure the work that we're doing is benefiting and, and growing students as well. So like I said, you'll see a, a group of very similar on November nineteenth, and then December third, talk about those building goals and action plans. And then Matt will talk about our unembargoed DPI school report cards, both district and school report cards. So that's kind of the layout of what's coming next regarding learning and teaching in the district. And I know you asked questions as you went along, some great questions, but are there further ones you'd like to ask this team?
So last December, when I talked about this kind of stuff, there was a focus on like the thirty-minute times in the elementary. And I think it was maybe sixty minutes in the middle school for the tier two type intervention. Do we, how do we stand with that? Does it seem like that's enough time? Is it working well? Do you think more times needed for something like that?
So you're talking like our targeted time or skills building, and, and high school actually has just kicked off their second week? Are you third week already?
I think we're in our third week now of, we call it radar time. The kids voted on what they wanted to call the time. So it's our tier two time at the high school.
And you're doing it, they're doing it three times a week at thirty minutes?
It's about twenty, twenty-five minutes is what our homework would typically be.
And then middle school, how much is your time?
We have thirty minutes for our skills, and then thirty minutes in the, in the morning, and then thirty minutes again in the afternoon as well for co-time to provide those, those intervention pieces and extensions. So we have an hour.
And yours is some, well, so yours is as well. There's priority times where certain areas can only pull kids. And then there's other times where, like, if I'm a specialist, then I need to be meeting with kids I can as well. And then elementary, most of you guys are thirty minutes, believe? Hey, he's here too, thirty minutes, so.
I think to, to respond specifically to your question for, for the middle school, I think we have enough time built in, in those two segments, and how we've prioritized with a focus on math and ELA in the morning and, and the, the other priorities in the afternoon, then our science, social studies and our specialist. I, I think that's a good transition that we made. I think it's continuing to use the data to help drive, what do we need to do during that time that we're still working to get better at, you know, to help with laying skills and, or, you know, missing standards, that kind of stuff.
I think my response would be if we need more time, that means we're not doing something right in our universal instruction. And we better go back and look at what are we missing there that we're offering for all students? Because if we need sixty minutes in elementary school, holy cow, I don't know where we're going to get it from. And we just have lots of other work than that means.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here and presenting. That's it for tonight's meeting. Our next meeting is a business meeting on November nineteenth in this room. On the agenda at this time, we will bring back the school calendar for approval, and then have new course proposals, additional data updates, and then we'll have a closed session for early graduation and the superintendent evaluation. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
A second.
There's a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion period, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.